I want to lead us to the right for many of us to take from America. To their clothing, for which the fans want to age in the God is the soul of the people.
We've got a ton of people.
My good morning, guys. This is the third minute of the meeting on April 17th.
I'm making my own statement, so I don't know what to do. Oh, sir.
Favor.
Aye.
Yeah. My name is one thirty one hundred and fifty six with an amount of two hundred and twenty one thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars or cents. And the payroll of my name is.
Oh, may I make the approval? Okay.
Favor.
Aye, aye.
You know. The court elections are submitted for the Avion support of the president of the sheriff's department.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the people. Oh, sir.
All of you favor.
Aye.
Review and acknowledge the code of the sign of present incitiation of the month of December for other word.
I'll make a motion to the judge. Aye.
All of the favor.
Aye.
Review and acknowledge the courts, not the report from our talk.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the code. Oh, sir.
All of the favor.
Aye.
Fail. You're allowed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think all of you are a little aware that in the fall of twenty twenty three, the community foundation, all community foundations across the state got some grant money from the Lilly endowment. And they asked us to do some planning studies if we wanted to. And so we spent fifty thousand dollars of the Lilly grant on doing a park assessment of all twenty two parks in Fountain County. There's over thirteen hundred acres of parks in Fountain County, so we've done a high level assessment of all twenty two parks in the county. And then the other fifty thousand dollars, we partnered with the Warren County Community Foundation. And then us in Fountain County and Vermillion County to do what's called a Wabash River Blue Way Assessment. And so Tim's been on a few ad hoc meetings that we've had in regards to the Blue Way Assessment, so we've received a seventy two page report on that. And so what happens next, the reason why they were doing these planning grants is it would put you in a position to write a concept paper. And if they like your concept paper, then you can apply for up to five million dollars for your project. And so by April thirtieth, we need to put together these two concept papers. And again, they will notify us in June if they want us to apply for a grant of the five million dollars. So one of the requirements of the concept paper is a letter of support from the highest ranking municipal body in your county, which is Fountain County Commissioners. Just the letter of support saying you're so hardly above us writing the concept paper. It's not obligating the county to any money. There's no match required. What you have is what's called an assessment. It's not a plan. It's not how we're moving forward. It's just a high level assessment of what we have, not what we're going to do. So the concept paper is to share a little bit about the assessment and then do some light planning in the concept paper. And then if that goes forward, then there will be a full fledged grant proposal that we would submit late summer. We would know and consider whether or not we receive any funding or the project. I don't even anticipate in the grant application that we'll be asking the commissioners for any funding into the support at all. It's more, are you okay with us doing this in the parameters of Fountain County? So. So I sent a calling, a couple of letters, just kind of high level summary. And just request that the commissioner would sign off on those letters if you would be willing. Again, no financial obligations, but.
I'll make a motion to file a letter of support on the grant program. Yeah. It's a great thing, a lot of effort for those. And Warren, Vermillion County also worked on it. Been a lot of work done already on very positive things in there.
I'll say. But I think all of the members.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we got some additional work for us. And I'm going to read, 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 and apply it up to some. So yes, true, and I was in a monitor before, but they're very much. See that for the mentor said that it was always been these, always like a hundred dollars. Forty general, finish your capital outlay, five hundred thousand. County general, ambulance, office, noise, five hundred sixty dollars.
Can we add something? Farshad, please, this morning. Do you want to take that? We didn't need to add to this.
We have to run here. We had a, this happened this weekend, one of the trucks lay down this weekend. We had some issues with the truckers and now this third one. I'm going to ask for an addition. We're kind of waiting, but we're just stood now while we're looking together. So I'm asking for an additional fifteen thousand, I mean, put in prepare.
Is that enough?
Yeah, I believe we will because found out just a little ago, the two new trucks were in the paint shop. So we're looking at middle May, receive them. And then we'll have to remount in August. By that, that we should be, we said pretty well that we shouldn't have high maintenance costs. Knock on wood.
Okay, so a lot of equipment repair, fifteen thousand dollars.
But what I've got left in that, I believe that'll give me increases.
Oh, sir.
Most favor.
Aye.
Any action for appointment? Can replace any rooms? I'll make that mention to you. Pointing nine year.
Yeah, if I don't think I can.
Okay. Right, all of the favor.
Aye.
Two over. Two hundred and three, guys.
Not on the beyond, we're not saying that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Stan, do you want me to turn this to the committee for the.
Yeah. It's just in the government, so. There's introduction and discussion. The commissioners have discussed for several years. Going way back, the county hasn't had a functioning drainage board or surveyors since the nineteen eighties. The last few years, we drainage boards, the drainage board being invented by the county commissioners or even by a separate board. And restarting drains and doing all the competitive community work, commissioners have handled that for the last few years. But we have reached a point where it can be this ordinance establishes a separate drainage board. So the membership can either be three, it can be two members of section, partners of drainage board members need to have knowledge of farming and drainage, agriculture and drainage. And it can either be two, two citizen members appointed by the executive and, and one commissioner servant to a three person board. Or it could be five, it could be one commissioner and four. And it's drafted by Pat three, two citizen members and commissioner. We can discuss and change that. There's a requirement in the statute that the members have to be sort of citizen members, the non elected official have to receive at least a reimbursement for their expenses for travel to and from the U door in their mileage that they are investigating drainage areas. Some counties, this is a position that the this could be a pay position for the citizen members, that's completely up to you. You know, there's a blank in there that that's just fully in your discretion. But the way the ordinance is drafted for introduction is a three person board. And that have all the other tax for financing the, the ordinance, the has the term and the initial point of members are staggered. So. Two citizens. And then those. Roger coming to that at all.
Yeah, Roger is the contract surveyor, is an ex officio. He's, he's a member of the grains, non voted member of the grain.
I've already asked three people, so I'll ask one thought. Okay.
It'll be on the agenda for the next meeting and.
That one we have planned for the individuals.
Yes, yeah.
The general senior project, I think we had tabled. So we're going to be moving forward, accepting.
Yeah.
Such contact.
Yes, you you accepted the bid and then that the contract is ready for that project. That's a public works contract. It has payment and fifty percent on the delivery of all materials, twenty five percent on stage completion, and then twenty five percent of the hell baggage retainage for private operation.
That's for the good acceptance of that, it needs to be signed by a commission.
The, yeah, the contract that. And then.
Let me know.
All right, well, she's going to go get that document, first sign. There's, I guess, a work order for the elevator door. Stan, no way, do you, do you want to?
Yeah, recently Ben went to Brazil, Indiana. And Indiana Department of Transportation awarded Fountain County a one point five million dollar grant for community crossings. That's money to save Indiana, give back counties and cities if they apply. There were the questions on why Fountain County got one point five million and some of our municipality didn't get any help than received money, people received money and it's simply that they applied for it. If you apply for it, you're generally in. So has nothing to do with the county per se, if that became a venture municipality.
And that is the mass that you can get in a county there, so.
Then the highway department, may turns everybody to work on that. I thank you.
USI for problems, huh?
USI. And it will be used this year, we have to match five hundred thousand dollars. It'll be used this year from the seventy city limits down to about Starky Road, on Trail County. So that's what one point five or two million dollars will get you at about one, one and a half inch. It's just an overrun. So the stuff is very expensive. So, but that's worth going to. Last year, we did a river. Out of out of.
At the bottom, is that right?
You went for a.
Oh, I see, I don't know. The. Print for.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we. We need to wind that out.
All right.
More to call it some names. First, get on you.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have anything on the elevator door?
Yes, I have a repair work order. It's very high, seven thousand eighty six dollars. We've already spent fifteen hundred dollars on the part. Bill has offered to do it for his wage and but you have a work order. He's in there and in my office, if you want to talk to him, but they want to pass. You know, initial progress payment and the rest of it as a unconditional. And but here's, want to look at that. Bill said, it was a simple procedure.
Hey.
We're talking about the elevator.
Yeah, the elevator.
Well, I just think it's a ridiculous amount of money to install a selflessly engine on a silver. I mean, I just I just said I would do it on a weekend or something. You know, if you guys would want to entertain that, but. Except you, there's no electricity and there's no electrical component to it. All it is, is replacing the engine on the bottom of the door. And for seven thousand dollars, I just thought that was ridiculous.
Here's, here's an awesome, if he wants to do it and get into the thing, it's kind of like, and there we have the work here, so I, I'm fine showing him.
I mean, I, I feel probably I'll do it with my wages. I mean, I, you know, I'll come at it on. You know, I just have bits. That's, that's what I'm lying, I thought for that.
If something comes up and you say white flag, we'll keep that somewhere. Okay, thank you, bro.
You can be out of the court house. You know, I'll do this at one time. Actually, it's missing. I think it was missing. After about, he's saying, he's had a lot of questions about ATM and in the courthouse. People are hitting with other parts and and they don't want to go into the bank, they just like to have one, I don't know how you go by the benefit. I said our first thing would get approval, it has to be a referral from your boss. Would be the first step. Yes, the cost, you know, before having that or. I don't know. I don't know. I I initially thought maybe inside the front doors there before you go down the runway.
Well. Was this a thing to pay taxes?
No, we're talking two different things.
Okay, okay.
That was a chaos.
Yeah, you can, like, it's an ATM for court fees, taxes, any kind of subsidy that we make them charge.
I guess if you find out.
I guess just the permission. For those of mine.
Yeah, okay.
I could start with a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it's going to be a third one, they look on one. Be based off of it, so. And they don't have any.
And I'm like a bad support for see.
What I'm trying to do, they're getting the people, the humans, I'll be like, oh. I'll check the officers and try to get the boss to put on this thing.
Yeah, and someone said one catty corner, but. But I mentioned two.
I know, people surprise the pushback you get from. Oh, yeah, that's straight.
Yes.
They all know nothing. An unhappy society. Nope. Nothing was open up. Want to root that one? Um, this is the one.
He thought it was.
Yeah. Dars, good. Dana, Kendra. Dana back there. Jimmy, oh, hi, Dana back there. Jimmy.
Jimmy.
She's.
Good.
She's.
There. I don't see him in the reflection out there today.
Well, you had about thirty one savings. And you do, and then gave the thirty in. Good. That's all, yeah. And you. I make a motion as well. Aye.
We weren't aware, at least keep up our comments. Other issues that folks don't use the gender. As comments, of comments, it's been removed about a month ago. If people don't contact the auditor, it'll be put on the agenda. It's really a problem, you can't. It's not about hearing, it's not.
We have, would you, would you hear a public comment today? There's a lot of clearly, there were some people that.
Yeah, and believe me, we heard it all. No, you don't like it, I know I don't have.
Well, I'm not sure, okay. But I'm not sure that it turned off, but there's a lot of people that would like to make some comments. Would you listen to public comment today? There's a lot of people that came out today, they were spending a Monday morning, they had full time jobs, they'd come here to public comment.
You were a government, we the people, we're not.
The, the, the point is, we always encourage interaction engagement, right? We encourage that, so if this people show up to make public comment, something that we encourage as, you know, citizens and as party, and vote parties, as elected representatives, this is encouraged. And surely encouraged, not discouraged. I, I, I'll be happy to start.
What's it? Really, ask for public comment, yes. Can't.
Continue your discretion. It's not maybe agenda, but. Question. You can give them your time on it. Okay.
Three minutes, there's not going to be no back and forth. Do you want to say something? I could hook into that.
That's it.
But it's not a debate.
And I will say, the plan convention is on the, one said, will not be public commenting. There's a public, oh yeah, there's a public hearing on the comprehensive plan. But after that, we've got work we need to get done, a lot of work. We are looking at a order Montgomery County has to answer. From up north, the solar farm, questions people have there about public hearing. Which that one does address, the have public hearing for the solar. But yeah, we've got work to do, we've got a zoning ordinance to get it put together and we know people are unhappy. We get it. And that's, we're trying to work on it, so. But go ahead, Brandon.
Okay, if you have a comment, three minutes. Say your name. Address. What we asking for this name? If you say your name and then make a comment.
I'm Cheryl Owens, and my comments are not on the solar farm, but these expenses that you've had today. Forty five thousand for consulting fees and they have a million for apple outlay.
I'm Sharon Dunsey, I live on Grand Creek and we're not just two now, we're hundreds of people who have signed petition that this be, that some of the solar panels be restricted. I've got a whole speech, I was given this assignment of talking about wildlife and how this impacts it. I'm sure you've heard all of that, but as our representatives that we've elected, as our neighbors who need to consider us, who don't want to talk about it in church, even though you're taking our money and treating your land like it's your own. I want to ask that you decide to put a moratorium on this for two years so that we can, as citizens, and we do study to find out the impact of wildlife. Grand Creek, if you look on a satellite map, is more green than brown. So putting solar panels out there impacts more than just us and our view. There are places for that. There are people, there are parking lots in Florida that put up solar panels so that they shade cars and that totally makes sense and they run businesses. But these acres, thousands of acres of solar panels in a two mile stretch interrupts everything, they're going to fence them with seven foot fences? That's, that's just crazy to me. There, there are kind of hundreds of questions that just, and I know we're behind the eight ball. I, I get that, this has been years in the, in the works, but I'm just, I'm asking you to consider us as your neighbors and, and put a, not, it's not going to stop, but please put a moratorium on it. Give us some time, that's what we're asking for.
I'm Pat Taylor, I'm just wondering what. Just for instance, for our home style. I've got, I saw we look big. A lot of my clients do not want to buy anywhere near its overview, so if his house, you know, values want to be great on it. Are you guys going to make that right with him? Are you going to owe recovery taxes? You want to reimburse him money for loss? What are you going to do?
No, if you folks had a look at your window, the city, the channels, you'd have a different view on that. Not a single one of you members on the commissioners meeting or the board will look at solar.
She made me to readdress the team, right?
But you know your place, she's there and moved into town.
Amber, um, if I have to. My question is just as a body that discusses what happens in my county. I'm sure you've had a discussion, how much you're going to allow in the county. If you haven't, you should. Or is your idea to allow it throughout every township and touch every township in the county? We've been going door to door. We've gotten more than six hundred signatures on the petition already. And everyone we talked to in every township, they're already pursuing solar in Mill Creek and Kane, they're pursuing solar in Fulton. That means, that means every township is going to score. So we're going to go from accounting of ag to the county of solar from north to south. And I'm just asking, where are we going to stop? Are, are you, are you considering? Or, or are you okay with just it coming in everywhere? That's my. You go allow it everywhere? Or are we going to limit it? You should be having that discussion on what you're going to allow. You're going to hear different stories from different times because people don't get affected until in their backyard. You've heard from Attica, you've heard from the people. You've heard from Attica, you've heard from the people. Now you're hearing from a whole different area, because it's touching different people, and you're going to continue to hear this debate, and people wanting to come forward, and address their concerns, and their fears. It's a valid question, how much do you allow? Come on in, people take as much as they can? Or are we gonna regulate it? Are we thinking of regulating it? Or we're going to wait until it's too late?
From the most, um, I have a spiel I've done, but I'm going to be honest, this, just the arrogance of shut down every meeting, so you don't have bad discussions about it, this fucking crap. You represent us, and if you want to play like this, I will spend every dollar I have, I'm telling you, and you can tell the solar company that I will, I will do everywhere they're going. And the millions I spend, the billions I'll cost, I'm done with this. You guys don't represent anybody, make sense? I'm just dying. No, get ready.
I'm blanking, okay, I'm listening, I just got involved in this, because it's known, obviously, some of this. Playing a bit of my ass word. Okay, from the beginning, I found two people that have been at the bottom of this since day one. There's two people, Brenda and Tim, okay? From what I'm gathering, Tim's in Earl's, but I'm going to hear, obviously.
No, I'm probably.
From what I'm gathering here, okay, you two are the ones behind it. You don't represent our company or our county anymore, you're going behind the backs of citizens, you don't want to talk about it. If this is obvious, you're going to shut it down. I'm here to ask for your resignation, your recognition. If we have that on record. If we don't, do we need to pursue other, if we can't get your resignation, can we pursue other opportunities? Can you, can we have your resignation here?
Responding.
That, out of a man, out of a, yeah, can we have your resignation? Both of you. From what I hear, you have, obviously have conflict vendors, I want you both on YouTube doing advertisements for the solar companies. Twist it, turn it, talk to your lawyers and say, it's okay, you're not representing us, you are representing somebody else, and we can't have that. We need representation, our properties are going to go plummet, it's obvious, you know it, and you know it, I don't know you, I have lied to you before. Okay, so I'm not, I can't say that. This is not right, this is not top kind of, this is kind of telling you, spoken to you, Brandon, and we will not be rough shot, run rough shot, or.
There's, uh, Charles Holter, I, uh, I'm here because I testified in about ten or more counties about these same issues, about solar and wind, and carbon sequestration. And most of these, including Boone County, where they just, right now, I just got a text, they just put a moratorium on solar panels. There, it's not limited to three minutes for us to discuss, and there's a lot of people in here right now. And I'm going to just ask if someone yielded me their three minutes, because I need about five minutes, it's not that much time on you. It's, it's really not long, I just have a few notes, I want to tell you some of the things that other counties, uh, are, are saying, and, and, uh, what people are saying. Um, we are being stopped, stolen, blocked, all over the district, as the people become aware of what these elected representatives, uh, that they thought, and that they trusted, uh, were defending their rights, are actually selling their communities out to this big government green energy policy scams. And I ask that you just look around you, because it's very clear, there's a difference between the people that don't profit from this, and are in opposition to this, and those that are actually benefiting from these subsidized buildings and subsidies. If you look at Dalton's, uh, website, it says clearly that their company is only made possible through federal subsidies, that's what their business model is based upon. So I want to address the two arguments that I hear most often from the people in support of these, uh, green energy policy scams. And the first of which is private property. I hear, how can you tell a farmer or a private landowner what they can and can't do with their own property? Well, of course we can, because private property begins with the roots of our labor, that we go out and earn some money, and then it's taken in taxes, and then those tax and subsidies are going to fund these projects, and it's so, that's why everyone's upset. Is because we could, we know for a fact that this is not possible without our taxpayer's money. So it's, if it's an issue of private property, we want our private property back. We want our taxpayer money back, we don't want it to fund just a few completely connected people and a few farmers. So if it is private property, we're standing right here for our private property rights, which is our taxpayer dollars. The second one is the tax base argument that I hear everywhere I go. You know, the, the, the argument from the elected officials who continue to grow this oppressive government around us from the local to the federal level, is that we need to do this because it expands our taxpayers, and we can build an eight-million-dollar justice center, and we can shore up our ambulatory services, and fire, and police, and maybe build a park, and maybe build something else. That, I think that you've completely lost touch of what your responsibilities are as an elected representative. How many here took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of Indiana and of the United States? And I, I have. As a Green Beret, I took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution, it means a lot to people like us, and you all took that oath too. And building a tax base on taxpayers is not protecting and defending the Constitution of Indiana, is completely outside the purview of your responsibilities. In building up this, and moreover, what's more important, because I grew up in a remaining county, I'm very familiar with, is that, if, our grandparents have already been promised these services that haven't been delivered, they've already been promised the services of ambulatory service, fire, and so either they're empty promises that haven't been come through, or they've been mismanaged, that now, all of a sudden, there's a new elite, uh, a niche market that's getting all this money, that the excuse is, we're going to use this money to provide more services. Those services have already been promised for generations, and taxes have been implemented on our, of generations of people in Bakersfield County, and all over, and all over Indiana, to subsidizing programs, and now, all of a sudden, don't have any funding and need more money. So I disagree with those two main arguments that I hear everywhere, property rights and the tax base. Uh, not to mention, that we are supporting, and it's supposed to talk about it a little further, as an inferior energy source. Uh, an inferior energy source that's trying to supplement oil and gas. Oil and gas, which we've been subsidizing for a hundred years. Our grandparents were asked to subsidize oil and gas, so that generations from, referring to us, that we would have infrastructure in place, and we would have reliable, and, uh, and efficient, and inexpensive energy, so that we could drive our cars, and eat our homes, and fill our homes, and all that. We, again, we've already been made these promises, and we built this infrastructure, there's gas stations everywhere, and then, all of a sudden, elected officials, because of money, uh, and federal money, decide, and then a niche market has been made in green energy, to pour this money into, that all of a sudden, now taxpayers have to subsidize not only oil and gas, but now we have to subsidize an inefficient energy source of green energy. So now, more than ever, as inflation is rampant, and people in rural areas need inefficient and cheap energy, you're asking us to subsidize something that only makes energy more and more expensive. And like I said, they're putting moratoriums on this all over. I testified in Jasper County, White County, New Weapon County, Boone County, and they have stopped these programs in all those places. They stopped wind and carbon sequestration in Hendricks County and Newton County, and a moratorium today in Boone County. Why? Because when people hear about these programs, we all come out in opposition, and the, and, and the commissioners have to start listening. It's dangerous for us to pursue these policies. It's absolutely dangerous for, for us to pursue that, and we don't invest in our infrastructure that we already have out here. It's dangerous, it's expensive, it's dangerous for our economy, it's dangerous for our nation, and it's dangerous for the future of our children, in my estimation. I would also suggest, as we backroom deals become exposed, and people are very upset about what, what's going on, I would suggest it's dangerous for you. I would not want to be one of the very few that are sitting on these forty-year basis of taxpayer money, on a failed technology that's proven to fail, all over, in Clinton County, it failed. The, the community, they sold it as a tax base, it has not provided any taxpayer funds. Uh, if there's a watershed problem that they have to pay for, the fencing was broken off, it took another three, four million dollars, and they're not seeing any money from that right now. There's myriad examples of these failings, all over the, the fourth district, and when this one fails, and there's a forty-year lease, and your neighbors despise you for selling them out, and for taking taxpayer funds, our money, towards a project that has no redeeming value, they're not going to be happy about this. As time goes on, it will continue to prove, prove it, and so I would be very, very, how we pursue these. I got to ask you, uh, a moment, I, no, I've got a parable, if you can ask me a question later on. The parable of the unmerciful servant will be followed, and you will be forbidden to it, but people will not forget this. And, uh, people that have taken advantage of their position and their power, as political power changes all over Indiana, which is happening right now, you will be held accountable for your decision to do that. I, I'm a panel holder, and, uh, I'm taking out coal, for, for in like we don't have coal. Okay, we're, we're looking at, we're looking at, we're looking at. We're looking at. Why? We're looking for. Why? We're looking at increased labor. Why? We're looking at. Why? We're looking at. Why? Increased material, increased. It's because you're elected official, and the federal government passes any slack listen, passes the inflation reduction there. They just passed a one fortune, trillion-dollar stimulus bill, which is potentially required, so the printing of money, which is inflation. Inflation is the result of deficit spending. That's what, if you want to know why costs are going up, it is the same in your own life, you print money, and you pour it into a economy. That was your question. I'm just saying.
Okay. Yeah, you're, uh, go ahead.
I, I'm just saying, it's not a perfect, we're, we're. I don't get it now, so. We're not happy so little, I mean, we've taken it out, but we're, we're looking at increased costs on everything, how can we go to survive without taxes? Can I, if you give a lot of.
No, no, wait.
You just asked me a question, you just asked me a question.
No, there's no way.
We're being held, but. It's time to go in.
Yes.
Yeah. You're asking. Every house, you're after this, so.
Yeah, no, I know.
They're taking fifty bucks cents on every one of our jobs, to provide, to do this, and then using that money to help us, if they're going to build these, this around us.
Okay.
If we had, I believe that, we could pay for those kinds of things.
Thank you.
David, I got a comment. I'm going to address it a little different. Your elected officials, why did you run for election? January first, four AM, this was dropped on the internet. This was preparation of military accountability. Two hundred and thirty-one former and current military signed this, to hold their generals accountable. I'm telling you as an American, we're going to hold you accountable. Why were you elected, and why are you not following the will of the people? You are either we the people, or you're a non, and if you're not one of us. Roger. And Danny Rees-Other, his neighbor, um. Cliff. You haven't seen the ones that are below that, that are pissed off more than, than I am. Where would you live? Just as he said, where are you going to move to, because your neighbors are going to attack. You move into town, that's not going to help you. Our country's turning to shit, why? We're going to let the officials build this with the people. Do your freaking jobs, or get the freak out, like he said, resign.
Amy Hineau, Peter Bird. You heard what I had to say about solar, but I do know that the county, we are working on something to curtail, stop, and grow the CO2 pipeline, and protect our water. Once our water is gone, we can't get it back, and I've heard that this county's going to take water from that county, and that county's going to take water from another county, at some point in time, you're going to be the last county on the list, and where do you think you're going to get water from? There isn't going to be any of those, so we need to protect what we have, and not let someone else come in and take what we're going to need. If you don't need it today, we're going to need it tomorrow. And as far as CO2 pipeline, we don't want anything to do with that, you don't want. Ten years ago, we went to bury my sister-in-law in one of those, the cemetery didn't say a word until we pulled up and they stopped us. They met up on the road at the entrance, and said, unload your sister-in-law here, and leave her on the ground, you can't enter the cemetery, because we can't bury her yet, because we are terrified of sinkholes. You know what that felt like? We didn't get any closure, you know what it felt like to leave the basket sitting on the side of the road? And this is where you want to store CO2? If it's not safe enough to bury a dead body, it's certainly not safe enough to pump CO2 in it. That's just common sense. I don't have a college degree, I'm not educated beyond high school, I did not inherit generational wealth. I'm not apparently smart enough, or rich enough, or whatever it takes, to understand the science behind all this stuff, but I can tell you I have common sense. Common sense says, we need to protect the resources we have.
I'm Carol, three days. I'm interested, I'm interested, we live in distress for our position as all representatives. It's very, very difficult, you know, we're approaching two hundred years of Fountain County history, and we all love the counties, and we all need to work to support the county, and I don't think people will be coming to Fountain County, to our wonderful parks, and our blue, wall-dash blue rivers and parkways, when we have nothing but solar panels to save. I own a lot of property on Grand Creek Road, it's always been described as a beautiful, verdant township and road and area with several sugar camps that well-known, and once we do all that, and the trees are gone, we don't have that. We've lost a lot of our history. I hope we can all come together and work out a compromise for all of you.
Anybody else?
Um, I'm not going to do the long comment, I suggest, if you're not going to open public comment to that meeting on the twenty-fifth, what they did in Boone County is they held a workshop. They held a public workshop, and they let people come out, and everyone, all the commissioners there, the planning board, these, everybody was there, and the public was able to come out in support of, or in opposition to, these solar farms. A hundred and fifty people showed up, and today, they're going to have a moratorium, because they listened to the people. If you're not going to listen to public comment, which is exactly what you should do, I can't believe that you actually said you're not going to do that, then I would suggest that you hold a workshop. You said that you're not going to have public comment at the, the twenty, the meeting on the twenty-fifth.
The public hearing is for the comprehensive plan.
I suggest that you do a workshop, and you entertain the moratorium, and you listen to the people, and you let the people come out and air their grievances, and listen to the opposition and support of.
I asked that you do the workshop later, and you think so, that won't be.
They did the same thing, they, it started at six PM, and it was, and you better get a big room. It was overhoned, it was two hundred people showed up to that meeting. And if two hundred people show up, you know they're representing two hundred thousand, or whatever, so fifteen thousand, they're representing way more people than that number really is.
Well, my name is Susan Reynolds and I would just, I would like to ask that you reconsider what he suggested. I think there's a lot of people that do have questions and I do understand in your position that it, it, there's a lot of passion, right? And a lot of how, a lot of people have feelings here and, and and I don't think we need to take the fence mode today. I think we would just say, how do we work together to understand people's interests together? And if we can't come to public, uh, meetings of this one and have those discussions, I definitely would support something like that and appreciate the bringing it up. I'd like to ask the commissioners, will they consider that? For the people that are invested and also have their properties and their property values, they're going to be better risk. It's a lot of money. And a lot of people that have put a lot of time and energy in the utilization of the camp.
Whether with a vice of issue, you guys see that, but it's also if you're going to find me at the same time, look behind me.
Yes, we already adjourned earlier.
Let's go. We asked, if you consider a workshop, how will someone cooperate with that? Would people consider it? How do we?
We've already, we've done that Attica and do it again. Do it with Attica.
Yeah, that's more correct.
So if we can follow up for you, if you care about that, we'll. We'll announce and that will be the one.
The plant commission.
Plant commission.
Are any decisions being made before the workshop, signing the machine or any committee? Is anything being approved for that would?
Well, he just, he just shared with you, everybody about intertuning and ordinance regarding solar. And what Hillary's done. So I, I think that what we have said.
That we're not, this particular project is on now. They have never even approached.
I didn't even know the name of the company until a week ago.
They have never approached. I have never heard of.
That's not true. They've been coming to me for two to three years.
I have never seen them. They have never approached us.
Heck, it's about, it's about.
I had never heard of the name until I seen it on a letter.
Well, anyhow, they have Dr. Dalton. Ranger Dalton. They're all in through the rainforest. Dalton has got liberty.
He came here this one time.
But does all have no, is it, is it some of your property, like, potentially going to be?
I don't own any property down Seventy-four. My brother-in-law does. I don't.
But is it, so these contracts, aren't they about to, aren't they far down the process that it's very likely that there's going to be solar fields on Grand Creek Road unless that, or, or has the decision not been made by the commissioners and the BZA. Like, so they, they have not approached us with current statutes. Yes, we don't, they can, they can come in. Um, like, they have been starting the process to have the protest. Isn't there a, a ERA or something that you, uh, uh, consider? Some kind of zoning or that's a property being considered to, uh, be unusable, but usable by solar. Close the economic development portion. I mean, chief's practice, like, forgive me for, I mean, you are the commissioners. I understand some of these things happen without, you know, but I mean, if you don't know, then that also is a testament of you being.
We don't need the land. We weren't approached.
But don't, don't these require approval, needing approval? And they are wired.
Not a part of zoning, zoning ordinance.
Dalton Solar is coming into that. So, yes. So if you look at this front page of Dalton website, it says that their business line is federally subsidized in, uh, green energy projects. And this is why people, it's, look at the website right now. It's the first paragraph that it says. So the reason we're a lot of business is our money. So if you don't want this out here, like, I'm not against solar and green energy. If it's done in a private market where the capital is raised and they go up with top performer and they sell their land, I will buy it. That's how free markets work. This isn't that. Thank you for your time.